Housing Transitions is celebrating our 40th year of serving Center County. Since 1984, we have been helping families stay together, feel safe, and take comfort in knowing they are supported by our team. Every day, we strive to end homelessness in Center County. We're proud to have assisted more than 6,000 individuals over the years. We facilitate many programs that provide shelter, address root causes of homelessness, and offer guidance to find long-term housing solutions for Center County residents in need. Our Center House Family Shelter is a place to stay and the beginning of a path to a brighter future. Rapid Re-Housing provides timely assistance to reduce an individual or family's amount of time experiencing homelessness. Clients obtain leases in their own names and receive a period of rental assistance. Nittany House is our program that provides permanent supportive housing for individuals and families with a documented disability who have experienced chronic homelessness. To help us end homelessness, please visit our website, housingtransitions.org, and donate generously. Housing Transitions will be celebrating our 40th anniversary throughout the year. If you would like to know more about us, our programs, and our events, please visit housingtransitions.org.
So, you want to vote in Center County? To be eligible to vote in any election, you must be registered in the county 15 days or more before said election. You can check your registration status at vote.pA.gov. Click on Register to Vote, then check your voter registration. You can register online to vote at vote.pA.gov. Click on Register to Vote, then select Register to Vote Online to complete and submit your registration online. Or, if you want a registration form mailed to you, click on Register to Vote, then Register to Vote. You can also download the form straight to your computer, print it out, and mail it directly. If you are voting for the first time in a polling location, you will be required to show ID. You can verify authorized types of ID at vote.pA.gov. Click on Voting in PA, then First Time Voters. Additionally, if your address changes, you must update your registration. This could change the location where you go to vote. You can update your registration online as well at vote.pA.gov. Remember, if you want to vote in Center County, you must be registered in Center County for your ballot to count.
You're watching CNET, Center County's Government and Educational Access Network.
Okay, all right. So we'll call the Board of Commissioners' meeting to order at 10:03. All those able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almost said "toot," like they do at the Eagle Scout Courts of Honor. Do we have any public here for comment? Not seeing public here for comment. Sorry for the slightly late start, some technical difficulties that we're going to keep working on. Are there any additions to the agenda from the rest of the board?
None.
No?
No.
Moving on to the meeting minutes. If they're good, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held July 22nd.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Approve the minutes from the meeting held on July 22nd. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Those nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to proclamation number 36, proclaiming August as Gastroparesis Awareness Month in Center County. This has been sent in now for a number of years by my friend Mickey, who has this disease, and unfortunately, she's having a bad week, so she will not be able to come. I believe we were the first county government in the United States to offer a proclamation for this debilitating disorder, which I know a lot of people haven't heard of, but up to 5 million Americans suffer from it. And it's essentially paralysis of the stomach. So your stomach essentially doesn't really do its job, and it causes debilitating pain, nausea, vomiting, and you end up feeling full weight earlier than you've had enough calories. So that leads to serious complications such as malnourishment, dehydration, extreme weight loss, esophageal damage, and dangerously erratic blood sugar levels. And unfortunately, a lot of people die from it. I believe it affects women a bit more than men, but there's still a lot of men who come down with this disorder. And, you know, they've been doing a lot of research, but unfortunately, at this point, they haven't found a whole lot that has, say, reversing this disorder. So we wish Mickey well, and we hope she could be here to join us. But do appreciate her sending this in, and I know there are a number of sufferers of gastroparesis in Center County, and obviously, millions nationally. I don't know if either Commissioner would like to add anything to the proclamation?
Yeah, it's been informative, the years that we've been able to have. I think, was it Mickey who came in during previous meetings to explain her experience? You know, and that awareness raising is really important, I think, for motivating medical research resources. So, yeah, happy to support this proclamation.
Thanks, Amber.
Yeah, I think as you indicated earlier, Mark, the vast majority of folks have no familiarization with gastroparesis. And I think getting people acquainted with the term, with what the conditions are, and some of the consequences, I think just proves that shining a little light on a subject is a positive thing. And the folks that are out there that may have the symptoms and maybe don't appreciate what's causing it, this may be their kind of clarion call to go get treatment and see if there's anything that can be done at all.
Yes.
Because this is, I just can't envision, as you were describing the symptoms, I was just thinking that's got to be an absolutely terrible lifestyle which to adapt to.
Oh, horrid.
Yeah. So we wish Mickey and all the other sufferers of gastroparesis the best, and take this small token of gesture to raise awareness. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Amber and Steve. Unless there's anything else, we could take a motion to adopt proclamation number 36 of 2025.
Okay, I will move that we adopt proclamation 36 of 2025 proclaiming August 2025 as Gastroparesis Awareness Month in Center County.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number 36 proclaiming August 2025 as Gastroparesis Awareness Month in Center County. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Those nay. Motion carries. Great. And Aaron, let's make sure we can get this over to Mickey.
For their best wishes.
Yes. All right. Now, moving on to contracts and authorizations. We have Leslie here from SEDACOG to talk about project selection for the 2025 Community Development Block Grant application. And if you could maybe cover what's in the upper right-hand corner of your spreadsheet first in terms of the amount of money available annually.
Absolutely, yes. So two weeks ago, I was here and reviewed with commissioners the projects that had been submitted for the 2025 funding. We did receive allocations. I believe we had allocations last time I was here, but just in case, as a review, Center County's estimated allocation for 2025 is $343,476. The on behalf of community of Bellefonte Boroughs estimated allocation is $115,442. So that brings the total CDBG estimated funds for between the county and OBO to $458,918. So today, we're really just looking at projects and talking a little bit about SEDACOG administration. So again, going back to the county figure of $343,476, when we account for SEDACOG administration of $61,250 to administer the grant, that leaves a net available for projects of $282,226.
And so I don't think we have to commit every dollar, but generally, it's good to commit most of it, as I remember.
That's correct, yes. Yes. And so between, well, the last two weeks, I had some clarification on a few of the projects that were presented, namely, the Haynes-Aaronsburg Municipal Authority Plum Street Water Main Replacement. I think we were in the middle of a demographic survey, and that came in at 77.14% LMI for those households. So it is definitely an eligible and fundable project. So it'd be worthwhile project, good use of funds. I also received an updated opinion of cost from the engineer to provide, basically replace water main valves and, or the water main and valves along West Plum Street, West Aron Square. I believe that's about 12 or 13 households. And so the OPC came in at just about $200,000. So with environmental review and Davis Bacon-related acts, that would put their ask, their request at 202, 808. The Haynes-Woodward Municipal Authority had been funded in 2023 for the Mountain Avenue Waterline Replacement. That OPC had come in a little bit higher than anticipated, so they needed an additional year of funding. So they're requesting the additional $79,418 to be fully funded for that project. And then, again, Milesburg Borough had come to us with a couple of street paving projects. The, you know, this being a smaller project, the planning department actually was in the borough yesterday, meeting with folks there and talking about some of their...
Could you speak up so that...
Oh, she can't hear me. Sure. Sorry about that. So the planning department was in the borough yesterday and talked about liquid fuels and E for local use being perhaps a better resource for funding those projects, and I tend to agree with that consensus. So we're taking a look at that and making sure those folks are being served and get those projects underway.
All right. So it sounds like although we appreciate Milesburg Borough participating in the Community Development Block Grant, we have potentially two other funding sources to work on transportation infrastructure, whereas we don't really have any other source of helping the water and sewer authorities in the rural parts of the county.
It's a little more limited, that's for sure. Yeah.
It's a lot more streamlined, too, the process for us approving money from those funds is simpler than the Community Development Block Grant process.
True. All right. So it would appear then we're down to two potential projects, the Haynes-Woodward Municipal Authority Mountain Avenue Waterline Replacement, which we have funded in prior years, but unfortunately, there was already a little bit of a funding gap, and now costs have increased. And then, for the Haynes-Aaronsburg Municipal Authority, who I believe we've also helped out in the past, now needs to replace the water main and valves along both West Plum Street and West Aron Street. So I'll add Commissioner Concepcion, comments, questions, thoughts?
Yeah, this makes sense to me, you know, as we've discussed with, you know, that there's different streams of money for transportation projects. So I think this is a reasonable direction.
All right. So would your thought be potentially to fund the entire request from Haynes-Woodward of, like, $79,418, and then whatever remains pledged toward Haynes-Aaronsburg?
I think if that's the best, the most important thing, I think, is making sure that we divide this in a way that any particular projects can be completed.
Yeah.
So, you know, and so that we're prioritizing, you know, fully funding at least one of the requests so that it can be fully completed.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner Concepcion?
No, that's good.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I guess the question is, you're looking at $432,000 plus dollars for the Haynes-Aaronsburg. If we only give them a portion of that, where does that leave them as far as their completion?
So the good news actually is, we do have an updated opinion of cost from the engineer. And so based on the 12 households in this section of the service area, it would actually only be $200,000, and not the, I know that was on your spreadsheet from before, but the new OPC came in at $200,000. And they're able to cover, HEMA is able to cover engineering costs and any remainder of construction costs locally. So it would just require the one year of CDBG.
So...
I thought I'd heard you say that.
Yeah.
It seemed too positive.
So we're, that actually ends up being, what, $279,000?
The total project cost?
No, I mean, between the two.
Oh, between the two, yes.
We'd be spending, we would be investing $279,000, is that correct? $200,000 for the Haynes-Aaronsburg and $79,000 for the Haynes-Woodward. Is that correct?
Right. Yes. So after SEDACOG administration, the net available for projects is $282,226. So I would recommend using that total allocation between those two projects.
And that we would cover both those projects in their entirety, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, there's been some good news for an old day.
Yeah.
All right. So Amber, I don't know if you were following that. It sounded like Leslie had some good news on the Haynes-Aaronsburg project, but actually, it's fabulous news. They're only asking us for $200,000 now, because some of the costs did come in substantially lower, and they're willing to cover some of the other costs, such as engineering.
Great.
So the two requests together come to roughly $279,418, and we have $282,226 available. So we're, we have a few bucks left over.
Yep. Doesn't happen too often.
Okay.
No, no. All right. Okay.
As long as they don't come back asking for overrun, I guess we're all right, because we have $3,000, which might not get you very far.
No.
But, yeah, it sounds reasonable. I would support that.
Are you okay with that, too, Amber?
Yes. I'll let Steve make the motion, because I'm not sure that I have it exactly correct, because the audio is a little bit low. But I'm happy to support that.
All right.
I would make the motion to approve the Haynes-Woodward Waterline Replacement and the Haynes-Aaronsburg Municipal Water Main Project in the total amount of $279 and change, or whatever that comes close to our allocation for this year's Community Development Block Grant.
And I will second that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to fully fund both projects based on an estimated cost of $279,418 between the two projects.
Might be a little more than that.
All right. Or even a tiny bit more. All those in favor of the motion, do so by saying aye.
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 Those nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you.
And thanks for making this one a lot easier than it originally sounded.
Happy to do that. And I think I'm staying up here for the next hour.
All right. And then, we also are considering the approval of the professional services for SEDACOG. You might want to ask for the money now, you've made us pretty happy.
No. So this is actually a professional services agreement between the county and SEDACOG to administer the 2024 CDBG grant contract. And so that's a three-year entitlement contract, so it'd be '24 to '27. And I believe that figure was $81,150, and that was both between county and your OBO Bellefonte Borough Administration of Grants.
All right. That includes the Bellefonte Borough Administration.
It does.
Okay. Any questions from either Commissioner on that one?
Just one.
That makes sense.
What does Bellefonte receive in Block Grant funding? Do you have any idea?
So for, yes, I do. So their entitlement for 2025 was $115,442, and I believe that's just a small decrease from last year, so 2024 would have been closer to $116.
Okay. Great. Just curious. Yeah, I'll support that. Would you like me to make the motion, Amber?
Sure.
I'll make the motion to approve the professional services agreement with SEDACOG in regard to Community Development Block Grant Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the professional services agreement with SEDACOG. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those nay. Motion carries. Great. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Bob.
All three.
Yeah. All right. Moving on to capital projects, Jonathan's got three for us, but we're going to end up taking two motions for it.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning, I am asking for your consideration and approval of a contract with, or I'm sorry, a change order with Holstrom Clerk Electric for the installation of power to the roller shade units throughout the building. These would be in the vote-by-mail center, the gymnasium, and a few of the office suites, and that totals $35,180. The second is a contract with Pitney Bowes to provide the relocation of the Elections Mail Machine and Folder Inserter from here at the Willow Bank to the Community Services Building. That contract is $2,560, and as the previous contract with Elections, that is due to the warranty period. So if we were to move that equipment ourselves, it would void the warranty of that equipment.
No, we don't want to be doing that. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Makes sense to me.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
The roller shades, is that, do all the shades in the building have that electric component to them?
No. So the individual offices are all manually operated. The common areas are the motorized, that will run off of a switch that are tied together.
Is there an advantage to doing it motorized, I guess?
It was a code requirement that we do the motorized.
Of course. All right. Sure.
All right. Do you want to make a motion on this one, Amber?
$35,000.
Sure. I'll move to approve capital projects items one and two.
I will second that with the comment that I don't particularly appreciate the need for motorized roller shade units, but I will agree and second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the two capital project items. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those nay. Motion carries. And then, in the ongoing effort to keep the trees from taking over Bellefonte...
Yes. So the next item is asking for your consideration and approval of a contract with Cutting Edge Tree Professionals to provide the pruning and elevating of 10 honey locusts and maple trees across the front of the facility, and then the removal of approximately 50 elanthus trees, including an herbicidal treatment to prevent them from regrowing at the rear of the facility, as well as some overgrown brush removal around the entire facility. This totals $23,790. I did contact a few other local tree contractors, and due to the herbicidal treatment of the elanthus trees, they were unable to complete that work, so they did not provide a bid.
I believe the common name for those types of trees is the tree of heaven.
That's correct.
And those things are insidious.
Yes. They grow fast.
They grow fast, and you think you pulled it up by the roots, but you didn't go all the roots, so it comes back.
Yes.
It's like bamboo.
And they also, you like bamboo, and they also, I believe, are critical for the reproduction of the spotted lanternfly.
That's correct. The spotted lanternfly does love the elanthus tree.
Yeah. All right. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Yeah, no questions. I think this, you know, is going to be important for maintaining the landscaping there.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Bring out the chainsaws.
All right. We'll take a motion, then.
I'll move to add the contract with Cutting Edge Tree Professionals LLC to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Cutting Edge Tree Professionals LLC to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we've got Chad from IT with a firewall that I hope protects more than just Palo Alto.
Yes. Good morning. Have a contract for a renewal on our Palo Alto firewall system for licensing and support. It's a one-year contract for $47,655, and asking for approval of that contract today.
All right. That's to help keep the bad people out.
It is, and to help if someone accidentally clicks something that maybe they shouldn't, help it preventing it from getting out to the internet as well.
Ah, very good. All right. Any questions from either Commissioner on that one?
No.
All right. We'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the contract with CDWG LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with CDWG LLC. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Human Services, Julia has an item, an MOU with Housing and Urban Development.
Good morning. I'm asking for your approval of a memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Eastern PA Continuum of Care, committing the revised in-kind match of $9,376. So essentially, what happened is we had had this agreement, they changed the rate as it pertains to the volunteer time for the point-in-time exercise, and so they changed the rate, and so now this is with the new rate.
Great. And we do appreciate all the volunteers who helped us during that point-in-time count. Very important to see what the census is for people who aren't housed in Center County.
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
No, that makes sense.
Mr. Dershowitz?
Good to go.
We'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the MOU with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Eastern PA Continuum of Care.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Eastern PA Continuum of Care. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks, Julia.
Thank you.
Kathy has a number of contracts for it, the Super Department MHID EI Drug and Alcohol. I notice you smile every time I call it a super department.
Well, we're getting ready for the move, so it feels like a super department right now. We have six addenda for the Commissioners this morning, similar to last week. We have addendas to last year's contracts for drug and alcohol. The Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs is in the process of renewing our grant agreement with their department. They've extended the current grant agreement through December 31, 2025, excuse me, and are recommending that we extend all of our drug and alcohol contracts through that same time period. Once they've updated the grant agreement, then we will issue new contracts with our providers. So the contract addendas before you today are similar to last week's contract addendas in that we are extending all of these contracts with our DNA providers through the time period July 1, 2025, through December 31, 2025. The first is a contract addendum with White Deer Run LLC, six-month extension for withdrawal management, which is detox, residential, case management, and medication-assisted treatment services. This addendum will be for $35,000, and it's 100% state funding. The second addendum is with Drug and Alcohol Rehabilitation Services. This is an adolescent program, six-month extension for residential services. It's estimated at $2,500, and that will be federal funds. The third is an addendum with Discovery House, six-month extension outpatient treatment, case management, and medication-assisted treatment, $2,500, mostly state funds. The county match will be $115. The fourth is an addendum with Hear, Inc., six-month extension for halfway health services, case management, and medication-assisted treatment. The contract total is estimated at $2,500, and that will be 100% state funds through the department. The fifth is an addendum with Clearbrook Treatment Centers LLC, doing business as Huntington Creek Recovery Center. This is also an adolescent program, six-month extension, withdrawal management, otherwise known as detox, residential, case management, and medication-assisted treatment services. This is estimated at $2,500 and will also be federal funds. And then the last one is an addendum with BGI Brandy Wine LLC, doing business as Bowling Green Brandy Wine, six-month extension, providing detox, residential services, case management, and medication-assisted treatment services. Contract total for the... Contract total for the six-month period is twenty-five hundred dollars, and will also be federal funds for that time period.
Great, well, thank you very much. Kathy, any questions from either Commissioner on the contract extensions?
Just one.
No, that makes sense.
Just one, I, I guess when you look at a twenty-five hundred dollar contract, you know, that doesn't seem like a lot if somebody's gonna be in, in treatment for any length of time. Are these just kind of placeholders, or how does that work? I'm just curious.
It's actually, a residential's treatment is about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day. Our expectation is that individuals will apply for medical assistance upon arrival, and ideally they'll only be there a couple of days before their medical assistance eligibility will come through. So more than likely they'll gain their eligibility and will only pay for a couple of days while they're there.
Okay, I was just wondering, because that's, you know, a fraction of what you would think that.
Exactly, so ideally medical assistance will pay for the majority of their stay in treatment.
Perfect, thank you. Good, good question Steve, and five grand in that field doesn't sound like much, but if we're just covering hopefully generally the first couple of days, that might cover several people then.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
All right, unless there's any other questions, we'll take a motion to add the six items to next week's consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the M H I D E I Drug and Alcohol Items 1 through 6 to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye. All right.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Great, thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
And then Julia's back up again, but I think you'll even be more thrilled the last time she's up, which is coming up later, but another item for aging.
So, good morning once again. I'm here to ask you to consider approval of a contract with Mature Resources Area Aging Agency on Aging, which is also otherwise known as Clearfield County's Aging Office, to have a registered dietitian monitor the quality and effectiveness of home-delivered incoherent meal programs. They are required to have this done twice a year, so we are required to contract with a registered dietitian to look at our meals and the effective, and how, what the quality is. So this is a contract to accomplish that.
Great, well, good to see we're cooperating with Clearfield County.
Yeah.
Sister to the West. Any questions Commissioner Concepcion?
No.
Commissioner Dursham?
All right.
We'll take a motion then.
I will move to add the contract with Mature Resources Area Aging on, sorry, Mature Resources Area Agency on Aging, Inc., to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Mature Resources Area Agency on Aging, Inc., to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay, motion carries. Thank you Julia. Then we have our consent agenda, unless there's any questions, we could take a motion.
I will move to approve this week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay, motion carries. Moving on to authorities, boards, and commissions, and of course, we're always looking for more volunteers. Do we have a couple of current openings there, or are we getting close to filling?
We're getting closer to fill, there are a few openings on various boards.
All right, great, also, always looking, if anybody'd like to apply, just go to the county's website. If you have any questions, JJ will answer them.
That's right.
So we have for our local emergency planning committee, we have Mimi Cooper, it's an appointment, I don't think those officially have terms, you tend to serve as long as you want, and as long as you're sort of holding whatever position is required for that committee. For the housing authority, it's George, is it Corey?
Corey, George Corey.
Is being reappointed for a term of July 29th of 2025 to July 28th of 2030. And then for the airport authority, Celesta Powell, being appointed from July 29th of 2025 to December 31st of 2028. We'd like to thank all three citizens for volunteering for these boards. Any questions from the board on these appointments?
I just want to recognize George Corey, he's
Yes.
A retiree from PennDOT from years ago, who has been just incredibly effective leader in multiple realms, but his housing authority service is exemplary.
Yeah, I know we've seen his name on this list several times before.
Yes, he's a good guy.
Yep.
As they all, all three are, but George has got a long storied history of
Yep.
Public service.
Great, we'll take a motion then.
I will move to approve the ABC appointments and the reappointment.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ABC appointments and reappointment. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay, motion carries. Since Commissioner Concepcion isn't with us physically today, I'll handle the check run for the, I'll do the checks of the week to the foster families of Center County. There's a couple of dozen checks in here today for that. Very much appreciate them volunteering and helping out dozens of children throughout the county. Obviously, we're mostly just covering expenses. They're doing a lot of extra labor and extra work, a lot of us have raised kids, it's not easy. So very much appreciate what they're doing.
Is the architectural drawings for the media lounge on there?
I didn't see it.
Gary asked me to
Okay.
Look into that.
Didn't see it, sorry Gary.
No.
All right, so unless there's any questions, we'll take a motion to approve the check run dated July 25th.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated July 25th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay, motion carries. John, I think you did administrator's report last week, but just checking in.
Yeah, nothing to report today.
All right, and now what we've all been anxiously awaiting, Julia will have a presentation. Is Natalie helping you?
I'm just simply introducing it like I do each month. So this is on behalf of the 225th anniversary presentation, this is our third one, to you, the board, and the public, and this month we are highlighting our human service agencies, so no one better to do it than Julia, who's our human service administrator, so, thank you.
Great, thanks Natalie. Julia, take it away.
Good morning.
Morning.
So in, our local historian Chad Joyce was able to find a resolution, which we think is probably the earliest thing we could find regarding human services.
It sounded like a typewriter, I might add.
Yes, so this is, this is a notes from a meeting, which was regarding the Mothers Assistance Fund Law of 1919, which we would, it was a historical and ongoing program aimed at providing financial and social supports to mothers, particularly those with low incomes or facing challenging circumstances. It was typically state-funded and designed to support widowed or deserted mothers and their children. So I believe this is what we will later see is a precursor to modern child, well, I mean, modern welfare, in terms of helping people.
And I saw the numbers were fairly modest back in 1920.
Yes, they were.
Two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, I think was the
Yes, yeah, was the surplus fund.
And eleven cents.
Yeah, and eleven cents, you're right. So what I did was, I took a look at each of my departments and tried to figure out where they began their county origins. So in order of what they were established in, the first is Veterans Affairs, they were established by the county code of 1955. So I'd like to report that Veterans Affairs served 1,287 individuals, and had 13,000 flags were distributed to put on as grave markers this year. Moving on, Aging was established by the Older Americans Act in 1965. Our Office of Aging served 3,712 individuals this year. Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities was established by the MHMR Act of 1966. Mental Health served 3,463 individuals, and Intellectual Disabilities, 467 individuals. Moving on to Drug and Alcohol, which was established by Act 63 of the Department of Health in 1972, Drug and Alcohol has served 1,665 individuals this year. Children and Youth Services, Children and Youth Services was actually, the very first case of child abuse was prosecuted by the SPCA laws. So there were no laws regarding children, and so they had to utilize laws regarding treatment of animals and livestock. And so the very first
Wow.
Case, yeah, was in, I believe, 1874, Mary Ellen. And so that's, that's kind of where the child abuse laws first established. They would be formally established with CAPTA, which is the Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act of 1974. Children and Youth Services has served 4,791 families and 8,896 children this year. Beyond also with children, early intervention. Early intervention was authorized in 1986 by the Individuals with Disability Education Act, otherwise known as IDEA. Early intervention served 561 children this year. Transportation, that was a little tricky, we were able to establish that in the early eighties, there was a Director of Transportation, so we think that might have been when that was started. Our transportation had 1,698 individuals with shared rides, and delivered 464 meals this year.
Well, 464 meals per trip.
Yes.
Yeah.
And adult services, also unique, was we had a human services planning department here at the county, and believe that's when it was, Adult Services was established, as Adult Services is kind of that one agency that fills in all the gaps of the other ones that are so stringently monitored by the state, right? Only being able to serve certain individuals in certain circumstances and with certain ages. So Adult Services kinda takes care of everybody else. And Adult Services served 16,531 people this year. So if you're doing the math.
I was trying, and the numbers get really big.
It's okay. So in total, approximately, because with the families with children and youth, that's kind of hard to do, but we believe we approximately 43,071 individuals in the county this year were served by one of our human services departments, if not multiple.
Yeah, well, I'd love a copy of that.
Okay.
I really would. Print it out or email it to me.
Yeah, got it.
And I've been telling people that the county helps about 18,000 people a year, looks like I've been off by at least a factor of two.
[laughing]
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's a lot of people. Yeah, so, that's my presentation.
I have a pitch board to say, but I'll hand it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Okay.
Kat, that's interesting history, and particularly, it's kind of shocking that children endangerment or abuse cases had to be tried under animal welfare laws originally. We've really come a long way, it's, and the county's role in terms of protecting some of the most vulnerable citizens in our communities is really crucial, and this shows how, you know, how long that's been in place, so, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Dursham?
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't include one other element of Center County's history, and that is Center Crest.
Yes.
And I think at that one point, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that considered the county poorhouse?
You know, when Chad
County home is what it was. Or was it? County home. County home. But was it just for, for seniors, or was it for anybody who required? Yeah, I think, well, again, I think the county home at that time, I think, was the initial attempt to, you know, kind of cover some of the bridges that needed to exist when people fell into certain circumstances. And I, I just, you know, that, that mission continues to this day, and I, we're very, I think, very proud of Center, Center Care and what it presents to the community, and hope that folks continue to support them.
Absolutely.
But I just, when you, when you look back at all what, you know, whether it's from 1920, our, our county is eight, from, what, 1800?
1800.
Yeah, so we have 225 years of, and you think about what happened in the 19th century for, for, I guess, covering some of those bases of need, and you realize that there were a lot of philanthropic organizations and faith-based organizations that really cared for folks in amazing ways, and how we've evolved and continue to provide those services over 225 years is
Yeah.
Pretty amazing, so, thank you for the, for the amazing update, so, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much Julia, the local governments have been providing human services since Victorian times, I believe, even around the Civil War, most large cities at that point were providing human services to their citizens. But then I believe roughly during the Great Depression, having those services delivered by local municipalities was, was too much. Many of the municipalities were very small, the needs were great, and as oftentimes happened, counties ended up doing it, which is why we do 52 different things just here in Center County. And as Steve was mentioning, by the 30s, we, we had the county home, which provided services, and you're mentioning as far back as 1919, the county was already allocating 275 dollars and 11 cents toward helping out mothers, generally the widowed or very reduced circumstances. Obviously nowadays, it's a huge multiple of that number.
Yeah.
And I was surprised, I've been telling people for a year now that we're helping 18,000 people, and it's actually 43,000.
Yes.
And we'd like to thank the 500, roughly 560, John?
Yes, yes.
County employees. We'd like to thank the roughly 560 county employees, the hundreds and hundreds of additional staff at the human service agencies that we cooperate with closely for providing all of these services, because unfortunately, what with the advances in medical care and people's lives being extended, there are thousands and thousands of people in Center County who unfortunately can't take care of themselves anymore for one reason or another.
Just need a little help.
Yeah, yeah, anything else you wanted to add, Natalie, I know, or Chad, I know you two have put a lot of effort into this. No? All right, well, thank you so much for covering that, Julia, and do we have any questions from the press on counties providing human services now pretty steadily for actually just over 100 years? No? All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, thanks again, appreciate it.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, definitely want a copy of that.
I think it extends beyond 100 years, it might have been 100 years officially, but I, I think the county's been involved in
Oh, probably bits before.
Yeah, been involved in services for a long, long time, so, all good.
Yes, all right, so great presentation. Moving on to reports and announcements, I believe we're skipping the voters' registration report today. I don't think we have any other current announcements. Any executive sessions to report or hold?
None to hold, there are a couple to report. On July 24th, the board met to discuss a legal matter from 11:25 a.m. to 12:17 p.m., and the board met again this morning to discuss legal matters in executive session from 9:03 a.m. to 9:52 a.m.
Great, thank you John. Moving on to our public meeting schedule, on Thursday, the 31st, we have our finance committee at 9, bless you. Tuesday, August 5th, Board of Commissioners meeting at 10, and then Thursday, August 7th, combined salary board and board of commissioners meeting at 10 o'clock, and we have almost full press attendance today, so I'll open it up for questions.
Continuation from discussion had two weeks ago, is there any other update on availability and the future of federal community development block grant funding?
There has been a small ray of hope, Gary, I believe due in part to pushback from constituents. The Senate, the U.S. Senate is considering a bill which would keep the community block grant program alive, I believe it's looking at a small cut. I believe it's looking at a small cut, but relatively small. So, we'd like to thank the citizens of Center County and central Pennsylvania, who have contacted their federal representatives. It appears you've made a bit of a difference, and I know the President wants to take it down to zero, but it looks like the Senate's like, no, no, this is a great program, does a lot of good, especially in lower-income areas, especially rural parts of the country. We want to continue it with perhaps a small cut. Great question, Gary.
It's been nearly a month without state budget. Does that cause any changes, problems for county finances or the county budget?
Well, I do know your organization was reporting that another county in the central part of the state is already having cash flow difficulties. Here in Center County, thanks to decades of strong fiscal management, we're okay paying our bills on time and not foreseeing any difficulties in the near future. And I'm roughly correct on that one, John?
Yes. Yes. And we've been watching the budget closely this year, trying to get into the, the last quarter, just to see what, how things transpire.
So, good question, Gary.
He's talked about the need for mental health.
Funding right under the County Commissioners Association has lobbied for 100 million for the county mental health-based funding. Do you know, is there a specific line item in the proposed budget for that?
Uh.
Programs of skinny mental health funding, but is there?
Right. Well, that would be a very big line item. I know 100 billion sounds like a lot of money, but that increase is actually only a few percentage points. It's basically just trying to keep up with inflation. And so, I believe the budget line that's attached to is several billion in the state budget. And yes, the County Commissioners Association would like to see some kind of increase for mental health, especially if it was at least the rate of inflation. Everybody talks about the difficulties so many people are experiencing with mental health. Treatment is available. It is effective, but a lot of citizens can't afford to pay for it out of pocket. And that's where the county steps in. And as Kathy was saying, maybe we're not funding the whole thing, but we're getting it started, and we're paying for the first few weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jake?
I have a few questions for you. Kind of playing off of Gary's block grant question, was there a real concern that this year's community block grant funding that you just distributed wouldn't be allocated to you all?
Well, we had asked, Leslie, I think you said that money was already in the bank.
Okay.
Yes. So, good question. No, that money was, I got already in the bank.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then, kind of going over to the old Center Crest building, the community service building, I know last week I asked, and John said that there was anticipated August occupancy, so I was wondering if you all be willing to chat about how excited or eagerly anticipating you all, eagerly, how much you are eagerly anticipating this project, and I guess what it means to you all that it's finally kind of coming to a close?
Well, we're definitely eagerly anticipating the opening. We've been working on this for years. We've had so many of our human services agencies that have been packed in really, really tight, and then they have to add an extra staff person, so we put them in a broom closet, and then we had another staff person, and we're putting them in the photocopier room. And obviously, the Elections Department during a major election is very cramped. It's not the best that we're having to constantly move the elections equipment from secured rooms in the basement up the elevator. It's very bumpy. That equipment's a bit sensitive. And so, all of that is fabulous, the, the open spaces, the addition for the county to host larger meetings without having to go to two or even three different overflow rooms. Just so exciting. And definitely invite everybody to the grand opening, once we're able to nail down a date. Commissioner Concepcion, would you would like to add any additional details for that one?
Sure. You know, I think it's going to be really helpful for all of the Center County residents who need to be able to access county human services as well, having all of these offices in one place, because sometimes when a, a family needs some assistance from the county, there may be more than one department that they need to interact with. And so, having all of these departments co-located means that they'll be better able to collaborate with each other, and I think it's going to be really a great convenience for our residents as well. So, I think it's going to just improve the accessibility of county services.
Excellent point. Excellent point. Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I think Commissioner Concepcion's probably said it best, and I think the, the cooperation between the agencies is going to be, is going to be increased several magnitude. But one of the other things that I think is going to be, to go back to your previous point, Mark, I think that probably the most important thing is, one of the, one of the real issues in the human service business is stressing, you know, is the stress involved in working in that environment. And I think our folks have gone well out of their way to create an environment over there, that a lot of those stresses will be answered. You know, there's, you know, there's been discussion about, you know, how we, how we create an environment that it's more worker-friendly. And whenever you look at the, the situation across the state and across our country, well, you CYS as an example, those folks are in a very pressure-cooked environment that is incredibly difficult to understand unless you're in it, because they can't go home and talk to their family about their, their, their work experience and, and some of the situations. And so, providing an environment where they have a little bit more, you know, user-friendly environment, whether it's, whether it's some of the, some of the amenities of the building, or whether it's the fact that now there's a gym out there where they can kind of de-stress. Plus, I think the point of, of being able to collaborate, if, if you have an adult service issue that, that morphs into an MHID experience, or maybe, you know, a CYS, everybody's in the same, in the same building. They don't, they don't have to always communicate by email. They can go down and actually talk to each other and say, hey, you know, what do you think? Have you seen this situation? What, how would you approach it? And I think that collaboration and that ability to, to cooperate is, is going to be immensely valuable. And again, it goes back to being able to work through some of these situations and, and having an environment that's, that's not only pleasant, but I think useful for our citizens to, to get, you know, a better product in the end. So, we're looking forward to see how this all works out.
And more, more conference rooms for citizen privacy and convenience, and hopefully enough parking. We know, especially during a major election, there is nowhere near enough parking at the Willabang Building, hasn't been for a while.
Gotcha. And then I have a few more questions for you. I'm sorry I'm bombarding you all here today.
That's fine.
These ones are coming from our intern, Jayden, who unfortunately was not able to be here today. I encouraged him, but he said that he had other stuff going on. So, these three are coming off the back of him. He wanted me to ask you all if you were aware of any ICE activity in Center County, and if I said ask you all to assist with any of what they're doing with their mission, if you would be willing to help them with that.
Well, that's going to depend on state and federal law.
Yeah.
At this point, we're not aware of any ICE activity in Center County, not that they tend to check with us.
Yeah.
Also, as we discussed in a previous meeting, the Center County Correctional Facility is not licensed or authorized to hold that type of federal prisoner overnight. So, we do notify federal authorities if somebody does have an active detainer. And once their county charges are cleared, we notify the federal government, and they have until, as Steve was mentioning, about 11:59 p.m. to pick them up, and then they can take them conveniently to either Clinton County or Clearfield County on either side of Center County.
And then, the last question that he had for me is along the same lines. He just wanted me to ask you all if you were aware of the work that the Center County Rapid Response Network has been doing to help protect some of the immigrant communities across the county.
I think I've seen a couple of things on Facebook, but nothing more than that.
Sorry, that's all right.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, Gary?
Does the county plan to retain ownership of this building, the Willabang?
Oh, yes, we do. And we will continue to have non-human services departments within this building, and we're potentially looking at maybe transferring an MDJ office back to the building as well. Good question, Gary. Yeah, we'll have a little more elbow room, we'll have some more parking, and unfortunately, I don't know if we'd be able to move out of this room. We seem to be sort of stuck with utilizing this as a, a meeting room for the press. So, no plans for the media lounge yet.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
You don't want to roll it off yet?
Okay. We're, we're still, hope, hope spring's eternal here. We can, we can, we can continue to have that conversation.
We're going to propose a space study for your consideration.
Okay. All right. Great. Any, any additional questions? No? All right. Well, unless there's anything else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn at 11:01. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
The Center Region Active Adult Center is a vibrant, inclusive, and happening location designed for active adults 55 years and over to be social and participate in new experiences while also staying close to home. We promote healthy aging through our many activities and health forums, as well as lifelong learning through classes and social interaction that suit almost any lifestyle. Whether you prefer line dancing followed by a walk, or a game of bridge and a meal, the center is sure to have something for you. Visit crpr.org for more info.
Are you looking to stay active and healthy in the comfort of your own home? CNET has a variety of exercise programs designed to help you stay fit and increase strength and flexibility. Strength training, moving freely, and zesty chair exercises all work on improving flexibility, ease of movement, and core body strength. Gentle yoga is a specifically designed yoga program that is easy on the joints and easy for beginners. Chair yoga has been created for those with limited mobility. CNET's exercise programs air several times each week on Channel 98 CETV. For specific airing times, please visit cnet1.org and click on CNET Schedules, or call CNET at 814-238-5031. Nothing good on TV? You're just not watching the right channels.